Good.
All right, Board of Alderman Work Sessions, I'll call to order. First item on the agenda is liquor licensing.
Thank you, Mayor. You all should have my report on this, this item. This came up out of a series of meetings between us and the Parks Department and event planners and coordinators. And one of the things that come out of several of these meetings was the desire to align our liquor licensing terminology with what state and county uses as well, just to make the process more simple, both for the event planners and also for our staff. So I've left you a table there that kind of outlines what our current licensing are, is, and the equivalent state terminology and license. And what we would propose is we would bring forward it, hopefully with the board's approval at the next meeting, an ordinance change, just aligning these with state and county terminology. There will be one of these licenses, and you're going to have to forgive me because I didn't print a copy and it's not in front of me and I can't recall what it is. I believe it's the caterers permit on the state level. That license at the state level is issued on a per day basis, up to seven consecutive days. And our current license is done as just a seven day period. And we would propose to align that with the state as well, just to bring everything congruent there. We've worked closely with our state liquor supervisor out of Kansas City and his counterpart at the county level, too. We've got their support as well. And if anything in the future meeting, if you have any technical questions, he's more than happy to come to a meeting to help answer those. We're not talking about changing requirements or what the license does or anything like that. It's literally just a change to the name of the types of licenses so that they're congruent with state and county licensing. Presenting questions, I'll do my best to answer.
On the one that was the retail by drink caterers license, where theirs was by the day, would you still keep ours at the seven days for the thirty-seven fifty, or would you look at?
No, that's the one I was referring to that we would, we would propose a change in the schedule of fees as well, to align that, to mirror theirs as well. And there is a state statute that caps what the cities can charge for a liquor license. We can charge one and a half times what the state charges. Everything else across the board is at that one and a half time. And we would do the same thing, well, we would propose the same thing for the by day permit, if you all are agreeable to it.
Go ahead.
Question, so on the, for the state, it's ten dollars a day for seven consecutive, and we're gonna, you want to do fifteen?
Yes.
A day?
Well, that's what we would propose. But if the board wants to explore something different.
Do we have any comparisons with other cities, like what they charge, their schedule fees?
I didn't for, for this meeting, but if the board would like to see that, we can get that around. It ought to be pretty easy to get.
I would just like to see where we are versus where.
Sure.
Because I know what Clay County charges, but I don't, like the county, but I don't know what,
Yeah.
like Carney or Placid or anybody charges.
Any other questions for Chief? I'd like to thank Chief and Matt for working on this. I know, I know it came up a couple of times with Main Street and other groups, so thanks for.
Well, and this will make it easier on our staff as well, so that everybody's talking the same language.
Yeah, that was kind of the issue.
That was a big motivator behind it. So I guess from here, I'll yield my time to Rick. I'm sure he's going to take most of it.
I think he needs a little. All right, all you, Rick.
Hey, Rick, but before we jump into the second quarter information and starting on the budget process, I just want to make a couple of notes to thank Rick. And Rick, are you planning to introduce? Okay, all right, then I'll, I'll, we'll let him introduce his new staff member. But I want to thank them for the work in putting this together, both the second quarter update, which leads us right into discussion of the budget. This is the first outside of the retreat where we've gotten some general guidance and direction from the board as to what to look at, including you will see as Rick goes through the budget presentation, a series of work sessions with a significant number of budget-related topics. This evening, when we talk about the budget, we're really going to focus on the general fund on a departmental basis, and this is the bulk of the operations from the general fund side of things, just the everyday getting the work done. The information that we'll present is slightly different than what you've seen in the past. In the past, we've provided departmental updates as to tasks and work performed in the prior year, and then looking at the thoughts for the future budget. We have transitioned and provided significant amount of information prior to this point in time on the prior year through the PAFR and other reports that we do on social media. So rather than regurgitating that information, we are looking at historical budget information, providing new charts with those figures, and then looking at the actual baseline budget, and then the budget with new requests. This is information that the departments have been working with Rick for the last several months. On an internal basis, departments start having discussions about what their budget needs are before they meet. Then each department director with Rick, and then as they develop a budget and narrow things down, they meet with me, some things may fall through, and we look at what we think we may or may not be able to fit. And then we bring the information to you all. As Rick will note in a bit, what we're looking for you, from you all this evening is those items that we're looking at the expanded budget. Some of them are small ticket items, some of them are bigger, but we'd like feedback from you all if there's something that we've not included, or something that we've included that you all don't think needs to be a priority right now. This is not the final stab at the budget. This provides no bottom line numbers because future discussion will include compensation discussions, which you will see in the budget document, compensation and benefits for employees is a significant portion of each budget throughout the organization. So that will have a significant impact on future discussions. We also have some requests from outside agencies for some funding. We also have special events and other new items that we want to look at, and we'll have separate discussions and work sessions over the coming months for that, for the next really two months. So tonight, looking for general feedback from you all. So primary focus will be on the general fund. And we have started taking a look at public safety sales tax, what that fund could look like, and taking information from the governing body to prioritize where we want to look at those funds. Rick will note that we have looked at the Parks Recreation and Stormwater Sales Tax, as well as the Capital Improvement Sales Tax, both of those more recently adopted, and the history of projected revenues, or history of revenue collections, so that we can kind of look at a projection history of when revenues might come in. And the seven hundred thousand dollar estimate that we had included in the campaign is right on target of where we think we'll, we'll be. But that seven hundred thousand dollars is not available November one with the beginning of the budget. It'll trickle in over the months, and so we've got some of that information to share with you as, as well. So Rick's going to start with an update on the financials. I do, again, want to thank him and his staff, as well as staff throughout the organization for the, for their work so far on the budget.
And I just want to make a quick note. Most of what Cynthia just mentioned is going to be in the second presentation.
Yes.
First presentation is just kind of an update on second quarter, where we stand. And then the second presentation, we'll bring in the departments, and then we will get into those budget requests that Cynthia was talking about. But this first one will be relatively quick, everything looks great. But it'll just be the second quarter update. Before I do this, behind me, she said I should be mad if I pointed her out, but Madeline Call is our financial analyst that just started. She is on week three, I believe. And we did a baptism by fire, and she was heavily involved in each one of these PowerPoints that you'll see tonight. Just trying to get her in there, trying to explain as much as possible how this fits the big picture as we move along. And she, she's done a lot. We've been very impressed so far, so welcome to Madeline. All right, second quarter financial update. Throughout this, I may put on my glasses when I get tired, the more I can't see. So it's been a, it's been a long month here. I think I got the mouse that works. First, first slide here, we traditionally just kind of go over the budget amendments that we've had to date. The last couple, three or four kind of wraps up second quarter, second quarter. Budget amendment number five, we had the election funds for the public safety sales tax. Budget amendment number six, we added seventy thousand to the transportation fund for maintenance and repairs. Budget number seven, we added, we had a new janitorial bid and proposal that added seven thousand to that. And number eight was for the water main break, just right in front of this, right in front of City Hall here, so. And tonight, I will go into a little more detail. We'll have a budget amendment number nine in the regular session. Looking at looking at just the general fund overview, we'll go into detail on some of the bigger buckets here for revenue, but just give you a high-level look at what the general fund looks like at second quarter. We are well above our budgeted projection. I say that with a grain of salt. We have two buckets that you'll see that have exceeded expectations. They are use tax and interest income. So as of right now, we are projecting just a little bit more, almost five hundred thousand in revenue for the year than what our, what our original budget would be. Looking at the expenditures, I still feel these are going to come right in line. We're a little under right now, but we're ramping up the summertime. We'll have a little more expenditures happening during the summer, just traditional items that would, projects and whatnot that would happen during the summer, and things that started in first quarter really start getting paid in the second quarter and third quarter, so. Looking at property tax. Property tax, you know, traditionally, in the past three years, it's come in at roughly ninety-eight percent at this point, at second quarter. Right now is at ninety-five point seven. You will see here in the next couple of slides where we've exceeded budget in the past few years. This year, I was a little more aggressive, trying to get it aligned with what we really projected. I am feeling confident on the projection of coming in right at budget. Over the next, well, it's now down to five months. We averaged roughly fifty thousand, or ten thousand dollars, so a total of fifty thousand for the rest of the year. That'll get us right at budget. Property tax comes in very slow for the second half, but right now, I think this is looking really good, we're hitting budget. And this is what I was alluding to here. You can kind of see where we were on budget in the red, and then green with the actual. For the last couple of years, we definitely budgeted a little below this year. Like I said, I was not necessarily aggressive, but making sure that we were coming in on par with where we projected property tax revenue to be. And this does the five-year look back and five-year projections going forward for the trend analysis. This is one area that we will be keeping an eye on and working closely with Clay County. We have the senior property freeze that is coming up. We will, we have not got very much information on that. We are, we are expecting to receive some kind of direction on what the county is thinking. So this will be something that we may change the outlook towards the end of the budget timeframe, so. Looking at sales tax. Sales tax, again, looking really good. We are just above fifty percent, and so that kind of goes right in line with six months. We did have a little decrease this last month. We expect it, it was a timing issue. We expect that to make up in third quarter. Third quarter will be a huge determination on how we look at sales tax for the revenues and projections. But as of right now, we have not seen any kind of decline that we've been thinking we may see. Everything is still coming in pretty strong. And again, just looking at the three-year trend history on this, over the last couple of years, kind of like property tax, we have come in a little above what we budgeted. Again, this year, I am projecting at this point, coming in right at budget. And here's your sales tax, five-year look back and five-year trend looking forward. We do have, we do show that little decline. We have just had year over year of incredible growth in sales tax. So when we budgeted for twenty-five, we pulled it back just a little bit, not thinking we can outpace our eleven, twelve, thirteen percent that we've been doing over the past few years. Use tax, this is one area that is heavily affecting where our overall projections are for the general fund. As of right now, we are at sixty percent of our budgeted for second quarter. This is not slowing down, just like sales tax. The use tax is, has incredible growth over the last few years. So we have just not seen any kind of slowdown in use tax. So keep on buying online, keep on having stuff delivered. But yeah, this, this has performed very well this year. And as you can see here, the projection for use tax for this twenty-five year has increased just a hair. And we've, over the past couple of years, you can see that we've just, we've shot past our budgeted amount. I don't think anybody could have projected the increases we've had over the last couple of years for use tax. And here is the five-year look back and five-year trend for use tax. As you can see, we did pull back, just like sales tax, just a little bit for twenty-five, but that trend definitely increases in the future. Interest income, this is the second part of where our increase in the general fund revenue is coming from. We have seen only one decrease in interest rates, and that was back in, I believe, December. We have not seen anything else since. Therefore, we are still bringing in roughly about sixty thousand a month in interest income at this point. And I know you can probably read whatever you want to believe on the internet and what people are thinking, but it definitely sounds like they are not going to be very quick in decreasing rates at this point. So our projection at this point is six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And again, right now, we're at a hundred and thirty-eight percent of budget, which is completely surprising to us. We expected two or three more rates at this point, rate cuts. And here's looking at that trend history for interest income. Our projection obviously is double of what we budgeted for twenty-five. Again, with five months left, there, there couldn't be very many rate cuts, if one at all. So we're pretty confident in this projection. Building permit revenue. Talking with Jack, we ended up increasing our projection for this year for building permit revenue by twenty-five thousand. Right now, we are just under two hundred thousand, which was our budgeted amount. We still have a couple of items coming in, one ten Smithville, and possibly some more coming in by the end of the year. We may do another look at this projection by the end of the year, so. Billing permit revenue has turned out exactly what we thought this year, and is looking great. And here you can see where the last couple of years, our budgeted amount was definitely higher than what our actual was. Again, a lot of this had to do with developers slowing down with interest rates. But this year is definitely turned the, turned the page for Smithville, and we are seeing quite a bit of development happen. And here we are with the overall general fund bottom line as of second quarter. Again, looking at that increase of five hundred thousand, heavily weighted on the use tax and interest income. Like I said, when we looked at those buckets, I don't see a decrease for the rest of the year. I think this is going to come in pretty strong. The total expenses, we're going to leave right where we're at. Right now, we're at three point four million. That would, in theory, double to six point eight and give us another six hundred thousand or so, but that will be spent, part of that will be spent during the summer, for sure. All right, moving on to the combined water and wastewater fund. Revenues, revenues are coming in right at fifty percent, fifty-one percent. Do not see any change in projections in revenues on the water and wastewater. On the expenditure side, we did do a decrease. We've had some projects get pushed back to twenty-six. We'll go through a couple of those here coming up. But we did lower that almost just shy of two million dollars. So we will see some savings in the expenditure side in this fund. And looking at some of these projects that are in the operations of the capital, or the combined water and wastewater fund, you can see all these are in process at some level, whether we are at the engineering phase, we are out to bid, we are preparing to get into bid. They're in some process of getting completed this year. Two of the items that is causing some of the expense decrease is the Stonebridge Lift Station and the McDonald Central Bank Lift Station. Those are on hold, and we'll probably not see too many, if any, expenses in twenty-five. And that's on the construction side. Looking in detail for the water and wastewater sales. Again, we weren't changing anything on the revenue side, both water sales and wastewater sales. We are projecting that come in at budget. Both of them are following very closely to the trend that they would normally come in. Water is a little higher at forty-eight percent. We traditionally, over three years, have seen it at forty-five percent. We are very close to what we budgeted, so I don't see a change happening in that. And projections for the wastewater sales, we are just above fifty percent after second quarter. I don't see any reason to change that projection at all, increase it or decrease it. So both water sales and wastewater sales will stay at budgeted amount for right now. This is looking at the three-year history graph for both water sales and wastewater sales. As you can see, we've had some steady increases over the last three years. Most years, recent years, we have come in a little higher than budgeted. And again, I, when I did budget last year, I was a little aggressive on where we thought we would come in. So right now, I think we're sitting really good at coming in at budget. And here is the bottom line for the water fund. The only change that you see here from prior is at the total expense line for projected twenty-five. That has decreased, like I said, just under two million dollars, which would increase our ending fund balance as well. And those, that's not necessarily savings, just because those projects are being pushed, so. Looking at the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. This, this fund is coming in pretty much where budget is expected. In the revenue side, we do have one point, almost five million of reimbursement coming through for a streetscape. We are at the final two reimbursements, I believe, waiting. Oh, we got just one left. So we just got one more reimbursement to come through on this, and we will be done with this project. On the expenditure side, we've decreased. We've had some of these projects that you see off to the left there, just slow down, and actually, for that projection, it was streetscape, so that did decrease our projection for twenty-five. So we should be coming in just a little bit under where, or quite a bit under actually where budgeted was for the expenditure side. I know I'm, I'm probably thinking of a project, Chuck, in there that got pushed that I'm not seeing on the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. We did have some in there that we knew almost right away after twenty-five started that we're not going to actually get done in twenty-five, so. Looking at the trend history of the three years. In the past few years, we've not really got a lot of the projects completed as planned. This year, we have been very good at getting out there and getting these bids in and starting these projects. Like I said, on the annual budget, we do come in, we are planning on coming in a little less than what we projected on the budget side. Transportation sales tax. This revenue includes eight hundred dollars, this is, or eight hundred thousand mark reimbursement for the Commercial Street project. This is starting, I think, did it start now? It started, it was like June was supposed to start.
Started yesterday.
Yeah.
In the rain.
They're digging in the. They have had a little rain.
They're in the rain right now. It's cleaning the area for them.
This program will, this fund will come in pretty close to what we budgeted. All of those projects to the left are in process. And also on the expenditure side, we don't expect any changes on that side as well. The commercial sidewalk is obviously, Commercial Street sidewalks is obviously one of the bigger projects in this fund. And just looking at a three-year history, we do see that little dip in twenty-five. That is because the Commercial Street sidewalks did come in a little under what we had projected. And that also decreased our reimbursement, because that is at a percentage. And that also decreased our reimbursement, because that is at a percentage. Looking at the park and stormwater sales tax fund, uh, this is one area where we, the revenue side should be coming in as budgeted, the expense side is gonna be a lot lower. We have two of those projects, Dundee Road Stormwater Improvements and Riverwalk and Trail Construction. Those are, those are essentially on hold and actually Forest Oak Stormwater Improvements on hold. They will probably be at twenty six expenditure. We are still on track for OK Railroad Trail. I feel like that changes every time I say something, but hopefully it doesn't this time. Debt service, I had planned on making the, the transfers that we do with the city in second quarter, just me personally. That is the timing that I would want to do those. I did not make them during second quarter. Um, part of it is with the capital improvement uh, sales tax fund, with those reimbursements happening. I needed to make sure that we got those reimbursements before I did a transfer out of that. So, I held off, I will have these done here in June, soon as this uh, reimbursement hits. Sanitation fund, both revenue and expenditures are right at budget. Fifty percent on both sides at, after six months. Right now, we don't see any uh, big change in this fund at all. And this is another intercompany transfer that we will do in June, uh, with the verf. Uh, those, those revenues and expenditures are still in line. The revenues obviously will come from the departments to fill up this fund and offset those expenditures. And wrapping up with the six-month budget review, um, revenues, of course, as you can recall here, both use tax, interest income, coming in very, very strong. Um, holding the general fund up higher than budgeted amount for revenues. Expenditures, we are keeping right at budget, uh, both capital and the capital budgets and the general fund are a little less than fifty percent. But as I mentioned, six, the last six months does incur some higher expenses. Is there any questions on the second quarter presentation?
None for me. Very good.
Thank you for the presentation.
Oh, that's right. Looking at the department budget review for twenty six. This is a lot of what Cynthia said right in the beginning is pertaining to this presentation. I will start off, kind of give you a high-level overview of what you'll be seeing. Each department will come up here and present their department numbers. Um, if they have budget requests, they will present those with, with, in the form of the streets. They have some team members that will come up here and tell how specific it'll affect their department. As you will see in this, this is kind of the first discussion of the twenty six budget. As Cynthia alluded to, we are presenting this in just a little different way. Tonight, we're gonna show the main buckets of each department. Uh, we'll start off with a slide with personnel. Um, with personnel will be talked about very, very shortly. And then we will follow up in June and July with some more personnel uh, presentations. You'll also run into other buckets, three other buckets, one of which is commodities. Commodities are utilities, uh, your fuel, repairs and maintenance, training, supplies, insurance. And then you'll have another bucket of contracted services. Those services are usually set known cost. Uh, a lot of them could fall under professional services. Uh, could be mowing, waste, rental services, lease payments. Uh, and the parks and recs world, the camp hosts, those are contracted services. So those would fall under that bucket. And then the last bucket you're gonna see are the capital projects. Those are newer improvements to our infrastructure, probably long-term improvements that we see year over year. This is gonna be one of the bigger focuses of this discussion. Uh, that's when all these departments will come up, talk about the budget request that they see needed for their department for twenty six and have that discussion with you guys. This is the budget kind of calendar at this point. As you can see, June seventeenth, we'll have a discussion on staffing needs. We'll talk about World Cup outstanding funding and downtown snow removal. And then we'll go into July with some capital improvement discussion. We'll also talk about compensation and benefits. In August, we will have a nine-month budget update. In September, we will have the first draft of the twenty six budget. And hopefully, uh, property tax rate will be set. Uh, September thirtieth, we'll have a second budget discussion if needed. And then October, we'll have the readings for adopting the budget.
Rick, I'm gonna jump in real quick, because uh, one thing we've talked about and I've had conversations with board members as well, that October seventh, first reading of the budget. It is our intent to provide you all with a budget document at the time that you adopt it. So, um, wanna make sure we get that out there, so you all are expecting that.
In addition to looking at this process schedule, as Cynthia mentioned in the beginning, this is, this is something that takes months on the city side. Uh, the departments start formulating their budget, they start having conversations with finance. We go back and forth a little bit, we get to a point where we wanna bring in administration, uh, start having those conversations. Administration may have their comments as well, go back and forth a few times. So, what we're presenting tonight is what we feel is the most important to each bud, each department. Looking at a couple of the operating budget assumptions, uh, here's where we have roughly six that we include with every department. Um, the fuel, we, we are projecting three point five, or three dollars and fifty five cents a gallon for twenty six. Um, this is the same projection we had for twenty five. We don't see much of a change, we've done some research. Um, we see this being roughly three fifty five overall for twenty six. This also takes into consideration, Missouri has the gas tax, the, the fifth and final increase that they will do in July. Um, so that also is included in this projection. Health insurance, right now, we are projecting at fifteen percent, insurance at eleven percent. We did a, a blanket for commodities and supplies and whatnot, that is at three percent. Propane, we are leaving at two dollars a gallon. And utilities, we have an increase of five percent.
Got a question there on utilities. With that Senate bill that was passed this year by the Missouri legislator, should we look at increasing that a little bit more?
After they go through the hearings, we'll have to.
That's what I'm wondering.
I've been getting emails.
Okay.
They gotta have their public hearings first.
That's still not finalized, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if, as long as we've got it on the radar.
Right, right.
We'll have to. Unless they go below five. I don't see that.
So, each department will traditionally have four slides that you're gonna see. A couple of them may have more because they've broken out the budget request, um, per slide or a couple per slide. Um, most will have these four slides, a couple such as admin and elected officials where they don't have, or it's not actually budget or development. They will not have budget requests, so they'll just have the first two slides. So, looking at the, how this will go, we'll show twenty three actual, twenty four actual, twenty five adopted. And that'll include personnel. And so we'll be able to see how much of each department is percentage-wise goes to personnel. What you will see is anywhere between sixty and seventy seven percent, depending on the department. The next slide will be the budget review. We will build on the first slide and add a baseline of twenty five and twenty six. That baseline is everything to operate that department except for the budget request. The items that you guys are helping make decisions on tonight. The next slide, some of them may only have one slide, a few of them like streets will have multiple slides showing what the budget requests are. And then the last slide, we will build on with the actual and adopted and show what the budget would be with those budget requests, all of them added in there. So, that'll be kind of how we follow each department tonight. I'm gonna quickly do administration here before I pass it over to Chuck. Um, looking at personnel, and this is kind of a general theme for every department that I will just get out there at this point. So, looking at twenty four actual personnel. Last year, we did have um, some vacancies in multiple departments. So, this is taking effect of what the actual would be. What we're looking at at the twenty five adopted, that is assuming we have fully staffed. So you will see that bigger jump in most of these departments. That bigger jump also has to do with our raises that were added last year for twenty five. And also, we changed and increased the retirement. So both of those are factored into that twenty five adopted. But looking at commodities, the next line, you will see that we had a little decrease in commodities for twenty five adopted. That decrease from twenty four actual to twenty five adopted, um, really came down to on the minute, administration side is building repairs. We had quite a few issues with some plumbing in twenty four. And then also a decrease in IT with twenty four was heavily into the Tyler migration. So a lot of that was affected that higher budget and actual cost in twenty four. And that's kind of a theme that you'll see in a lot of these departments is, especially when it comes to development where they had two um, platforms that were added with the, with the permit and just the general budget increase in the financial software. Also, you will see here on contracted services, that does reflect a bump in twenty five. We had the beautification grant, um, and then also Main Street. I know in twenty five that we had to just move money to the, for the beautification grant. And that did increase that little bump that we had there. For capital projects, the big increase there at a hundred thousand was wayfair, wayfair finding, or wayfinding at a hundred thousand. And that decrease that you see there, a lot of that is also related. Some of the capital projects for Tyler was thrown in as long-term capital projects cost. Looking at adding the two baselines. You can see that twenty five adopted and the twenty five baseline, we are not projecting any increases in those commodities that are in those buckets. From twenty five adopted to... Sorry. I need to go back, sorry. Let me get back here. So, in that increase in the twenty six baseline has to do with the pest control that we increased as well as website updates. Also, I wanna make mention that is in admin is employee wellness, that is budgeted in the administration budget. And then also, uh, in the administration budget is the Clay County Economic Development Council. I know that's been a question uh, going forward, that is in the admin budget. Twenty-five hundred.
To clarify on that, our membership in Clay County Economic Development Council is about twenty-five hundred dollars annually. And as we were going through some of this, mayor and, and staff talked about, maybe we ought to bring up whether we wanna continue involvement in CCEDC. Um, is, is that membership worth what, what we get out of it? So, um, we'd like to have maybe a little bit of feedback from the board on that. Um, would also like to note that, and Rick, we hadn't talked about this, so I'm jumping so, some stuff in. You've talked, Rick has talked about future discussion that include um, discussion of the World Cup. And we talked at the retreat, there are some activities that we've looked at for that, some special events. Uh, as we talk through the additional budget information, particularly at the next meeting, talking about World Cup, that might have an impact on either the administration or the, of the governing body budget, depending upon where we would plug that in. But the discussion and implementation of anything related to World Cup is not included in the information you're seeing tonight. So we'll have separate discussion on that.
Yeah, and just to clarify on the Clay County EDC, and Gina can probably add color to this, and Jack, we've not had a single Clay County EDC project in the last five years even come to us that I can recall. That was more than five years ago.
Yeah.
And it looks like Clay County Animal Health, I know Kelly's worked with them in the past, but that's probably, you haven't heard from them probably in years. So I don't know what we're paying for. Because we still have to pay to go to all the events, we still have to pay to go to the lunches, like it's a membership that should be bringing, we don't have really any industrial to develop anyway, Jack, so they're not bringing this stuff. Yeah.
And I don't think.
We don't have any really zoned land for it, so. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think we get the same rate as if we are a non-member to attend the events.
Yeah.
And we could continue to attend the events and pay for those, so, yeah. So I'm seeing nods around the table, we'll, we'll pull that money out and we will, um, what, we won't worry about it at this point because usually, usually it's a spring renewal, so we'll let no, CCEDC know we won't be renewing next spring, once we've adopted the budget.
Hey Rick, that dip on, in the, on the twenty twenty-six capital projects, that, the, or the baseline of the, the capital projects in twenty twenty-six. Uh, down, is that, it's going, looks like it's going down to zero on the twenty twenty-six, right? On the graph? It is, or correct. Yeah. I think we, at one point, we were thinking that wasn't gonna be in the baseline, and then we did end up changing that. Okay.
To our correct. That should be at the hundred thousand. So it'd come right under the red line.
Okay.
Of the commodities.
Okay.
For twenty-six.
All right, thank you.
And like I mentioned in the beginning, a couple of these departments will only have a couple of slides. I believe this is gonna be one. Chuck will be up next. Yes.
Good evening. Um. I'm leaving it out. So the street department receives revenues or funding from a couple of different sources, the general fund and the transportation sales tax. And the transportation sales tax generally funds materials and projects, so we're not talking about that tonight, we're just talking about the general fund. And general fund commodities, we kind of went over a little bit of this, but include electricity, including streetlights. We spend ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year for our streetlights, only just FYI. Fuel, vehicle lease payments, training. And just a quick note on our career development programming, all of our staff have been CBL trained in the street division. They've all completed their NIMs training. And they've all had safety training and a number of safety courses, including confined space entry. Tony Turner has been through our APWA supervisor, supervisory training, that was a three-term course, three-part course. And Tony and Clint Cauldron are both LPA, local public authority certified, so they can help us with inspection on some of our federal, federally funded projects. So that's very helpful. And our contracted services would typically include engineering for CIP projects. Capital projects include CIP projects and some leased equipment. This graph here pretty much shows kind of what a large portion of the general fund goes to is basically personnel, funding our staff. I'm gonna go to page two, cause I have a lot of the same information, if I go the right way. To go over the comparisons. So the largest fluctuation in this budget is pretty much the capital projects, everything else is pretty consistent. In twenty-three, the difference there was we had some projects like Fourth Street and some of the street maintenance program was paid for other capital projects. In twenty-four, the big jump in capital projects was we spent three hundred fifty thousand for Quincy and four hundred fifty thousand for Fourth Street, so those were both taken out of those capital projects. Then in twenty-five, in contractual services, it includes a hundred thousand dollars for the roundabout design on First Street. So a lot of our projects get funded from multiple sources and that's, part of those sources come from here. In twenty-five, commodities and baseline budget basically includes sixty-one thousand for our lease payments for our skid steer and our boom mower. And the other hundred thousand dollars in twenty-five adopted budget was for Northwest Hundred Seventy-Sixth Street. That's that road that the city and the county were discussing on a shared road agreement. We had agreed if they made certain improvements to certain roads like Maine, North Main Street, that we would make the improvements to Hundred Seventy-Sixth Street. But we had to have the agreement and we haven't gotten to that agreement yet. So it is in the twenty-five budget, if we don't come to that agreement, we won't make those improvements. So in the baseline, twenty-five budget, that's basically the two lease payments. But we're gonna rebudget the hundred thousand dollars in twenty-six in hopes that if we don't get an agreement this year, we will reach it next year, so. So while I do enjoy presenting to the board all the funding requests for needed equipment and improving services to the community, I am going to have a step aside and I am going to let Anthony Glenn, our street division manager, and Myra Toothman, Assistant Public Works Director, present our budget request. Here's a list, but with that, I will move it one forward and let Anthony take the stage.
At least you asked.
You're right, I don't wanna offend nobody this evening. Looking over this, I just wanna basically point out some, uh, make some points on how this equipment is essential to what we do every day. As you see, the mini excavators probably half the size of a backhoe weighs half the weight of a backhoe that doesn't tear up as many yards as you would think. These, these minis leave small footprints and things like that, make it easy to excavate when we're doing storm drains between homes, different things like that. Two-lane roads, you know, they do a complete three sixty turn as well as keeping the dump truck and the machinery on the same side of the road. We can shut down one side, have proper signage up and things like that. At, as of right now, we are demoing mini excavators and right now we can get good prices on them, you know. With a hundred and five, we're spending half what it's gonna cost to replace our backhoe. You know? And with saying that, I'd love to like demo one of these for all the aldermen and everybody on the board, just to see how important this is to us. Because basically it's gonna make our job go way smoother, honestly. And I know how we are about being more efficient and different things like that. And if you haven't seen in the last six months how efficient the street department has been, please take note. Read what Cynthia puts out every week, you know, about the productivity level of the guys, because they work hard. I'm trying to make this quick. All right, moving on.
Anthony, if I could hold you for a real sec too, the mini excavator would also be able to be shared with the Parks and Rec Department as well as we do the water leaks in the campground. So it'd be shareable equipment across departments.
As well as using it like on, like the trails and different things like that, cause Matt and I have come together on different projects, you know, working on the trails, clearing them out, trees. You know, pulling them out, cutting them up, you know, falling limbs from like storms like today. You know, taking care of that, hauling it off, and it's just a lot easier to maneuver smaller equipment like this than having that backhoe and a dump truck on, you know, a two-lane road where it's blocking everything.
Does that, does that price come with the trailer or did you put on another trailer?
Not with a trailer, that price comes with a two buckets, an eighteen inch, a twenty-four inch. It also comes with a hammer drill, which is very important to us as far as breaking up concrete, driveway, sidewalks, curb. You know, like up in Greyhawk, we have tons of curb right there that needs attention. You know, so the mini excavator is just gonna be way easier to get in and out without tearing up mortar when we're repairing. You know, to where we're spending money on the backend to put everything back like it should be. But that's what comes with that sticker price. We do have a trailer already that we use, that we share with parks right now. And we, you know, instead of road and the backhoe all over the place, when we got long distances, we'll use that. Or when we need to take the skid steer out, we do the same thing.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions on the excavator? All right, the next one is gonna be our saw, the walk behind saw, basically, we use that to make street cuts, like perfect example. Beyond us, we have a main break out there in the middle of the street. We had this saw cut that and it took us way longer than it should have because the saw we have now basically cuts in a circle. If I was in a cul-de-sac, I mean, it'd be perfectly used. But as you know, the street outside is straight. So with saying that, honestly, you know, we were supposed to get one a couple of years ago, but, and it got agreed upon, but management forgot to go pick it up. Okay, so now we're. I was looking at, I was looking at, we were communicating. Right, right. But no, like, this, this saw is very important to us because basically, you know, let's just cut the asphalt to where we're not tearing up the whole road and we're more accurate as far as knowing how much coal mix I'm gonna have to order, different things like that. So we're not misusing funds at the end of the day. You know, we're not buying more than we need to guessing, saying, oh, well, I messed with this, I'm gonna have to order extra. You know, different things like that, we're being more economical, what we're trying to do. And basically a new saw is gonna help us make, make these cuts quicker and different things like that. Like it took us an hour on Owens over there, I know you see the storm drain we ran across, just to cut that out. And I am all about time management, so that, that frustrated me how hard we had to work, you know, to get that cut and it took an hour. So with saying that, I'm gonna hurry up and move on before Chuck. Oh yes, I do have the zero turn on here, don't I? I'm gonna skip a couple real quick and then we'll go back. You wanna come? All right.
Just while he's moving through this, the information that's listed in the PowerPoint is basically in departmental priority order. So that's why they're in the order that they are, that would be their prioritization of the requests. So he's gonna go through the ones here that specifically apply to him, but just so that you all know, as you look through that, those are listed in departmental priority.
And I'm gonna apologize for Ma for skipping her slides. But the zero turn, like, I don't think everybody realizes how much the street department cuts. You know, really, we're responsible for, you know, up and down one sixty-nine from Second, what, Second Creek Road all the way up to Price Chopper because, you know, a lot of people aren't cutting that. Or we're over across the street cutting, you know, where the police station is gonna be or around Helby Lake, different things like that. But with Matt's assistance, cause I always borrow everything from Matt, Matt's my guy. Like he lets us borrow a zero turn, but now that they, they're fully staffed and they have seasonals there and different things like that, we can't get that lawnmower like we need to, to where, you know, we're having to take bigger moors over there, like the boom mower to just cut that edge when it's more feasible to take a zero turn over there and just have one person go and just take care of all that. But honestly, you know, it's easier with a zero turn to get in and out. You know, that boom mower, I gotta have a truck trailing it, you know, so basically I have two people on one job when I only need really one. You know, so I'd like to manage my time a little bit better and be able to use my resources and my guys in different ways than to have a trail guy. You know, so if anybody has any questions about these expenses or what these, this equipment does for us, please feel free to ask. All right, well, I'm gonna turn this over to Ma.
There we go. Ambush. So I'm gonna talk about two software that we request them. The first one is the GPS snowplow tracking. So this software will provide a real-time tracking of our snowplow fleet. We will be able to monitor which routes have been completed and which ones still need attention. And just imagine if Anthony's done his route, he will be able to see in real time which routes still need help and go out and help immediately. Also, this will have a public interface so that people can see what routes have been completed. This will allow everyone, you know, plan their travels and also for the city to be more efficient. And also reduce, people will not have to call City Hall as much. Also have complaints, they will see, they will kind of predict when they will be by their route, by across the street. You know, they see them in Greyhawk, okay, they are up north, they'll come to my house pretty soon. So this will definitely, definitely help a lot our snow response, help our guys and also help residents see where we are.
Question.
Yes.
Question on that, how does that interact with the companies that we contract with on snowplow removal?
You're jumping ahead like next board meeting.
Okay.
And I will be coming to you with some new information about our snow operation.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
That one sixty-nine or ninety-two.
It will only track those that we have control over.
The street department to do a lot of that. So we'll see that.
Are you gonna talk anymore about, about that? We do plan, you noticed when Rick spoke earlier, it is the next meeting, right, July seventeenth? We'll have discussion of downtown snow removal. We talked, what did I? Well, it's practically Christmas, so. We talked at the retreat about options that we're looking at for snow removal. That's gonna be a significant area of discussion in the next work session. It also is, there is cost associated with that, that is not included in any of the information you see this evening, so.
But either way, how we decide to proceed, we'll make sure if we have a contractor, they'll have access to it so that we can see. They can at least provide help to the other routes. So the implementation cost will be twenty-five thousand. This cost is mainly a one-time thing and then for the next years will be probably half. Just a little service like per track, whichever, how many, it depends how many trucks we will be using, putting this system on. The other software is the AI road assessment software. So historically, we win doing the assessments manually. Staff goes out and we have a protocol and we assess the roads. But this is very subjective, not consistent, and especially when we change personnel, we get different numbers. Just is that people have different ways to evaluate the same issue on the road. So this software will allow for faster, objective, more consistent evaluations, will save tons of time. This last time that we did the PCI assessment, we started last year and we had to go back and forth to reassess the same roads many times, just because different people were doing it, so the numbers were not consistent. So the way it works is it uses video footage and the images, the images are assessed by AI, you know, it gets automated. They evaluate the road conditions and gives us the number, the condition of the road. And it puts it in a software where we can see it, we can integrate it with the GIS. So it will save lots of time and mainly reduce errors and it will be just objective, something that we necessarily haven't had in the past. It will look something, I didn't think about my picture, so. The one on the top is like a snowplow, you can imagine what roads were completed but wasn't. And then down below, the way it works, you just put a cell phone on the, on the car and then you drive by and the software does everything. Does it all, it processes it and then we will see it just like we do it in our GIS right now. And we'll make sure that it integrates with our current software. The cost of implementation will be about twenty-five thousand. We don't do the PCI assessment every year, so it will be probably like every other year. That's just an estimate, once we, if we decide to move forward, we will choose a vendor and see the actual cost. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I will say I'd ask Anthony and Chuck about this when they came out and we walked our subdivision about, explain to me how this really works. And it sounded really fascinating of how intricate that it will pick up, like the most minute change in a, in a road. So I found that very interesting and very beneficial, so, thank you.
Myra, you just said that, that we don't do it in-house, the contractor does this, the PCI?
We do it, staff do it.
Okay.
We do it in-house, the guys, we all receive kind of a training, calibration, median training. And then the guys go out and they have a type of a form, we have it in our GIS and they assign a score. You know, for instance, you have a pothole, so then that decreases so many points to the score. If you have cracks, there are so many things that they, they evaluate. But what I see is so much deep or, or what I can, what I can count along the road, somebody else can see a difference. So that's when the issue comes, like I can say this road is, is a seventy of a hundred and they, somebody may come and say, I think it's an eighty. And because we are doing different roads, at the end of the day, I just see a And because we are doing different roads, at the end of the day, I just see a report. So I'm like, this doesn't make sense. So they have to go back and redo it. So it's, it's, it's subjective. So having a one, not sorry, one person, but one software doing it will help us be more consistent and more accurate.
Yeah, I misunderstood you then. And, and how often, I thought we did this a lot more frequently, every two years? I thought we did this more frequently. It started the PCI, you know?
If we were to do it every six months, probably we won't see much difference, you know, like the road doesn't deteriorate that fast. Uh, maybe every year could be beneficial. It just takes a lot of time for the guys to go and do the assessment and then for us to process the information that every two years is the way we've been doing it.
And with the software, we be doing the same amount?
Many times as we can want. Of course, I have to pay for it, um, but we will be able to do it more often because it will be faster.
Okay, and the software, we would be doing it as well, correct? Okay.
Staff will still collect the information, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, and it goes into each vehicle, right? Do we use it in? Just like the snow removal equipment? No?
We just collected like one time, uh, can be in one person's, it's like a via cellphone. Then every, all those pictures and videos go to the company with the software and they process. And it literally has a picture and it collect, it identifies stop sign, road, pothole, sidewalk. Um, it processes all that information and then it gives you a score or the condition.
Okay, I, I thought it was something with the trucks like, uh, the snow removal, uh, the snow removal. Okay, thank you.
Even though we didn't do any improvements.
Is, is that where you got the increase in the road work productivity?
Self, self-healing roads.
We're using better asphalt.
So both of these softwares, we're just touching, touching the. Perforate of what this stuff's capable of doing. I mean, the PCI software. It will calculate a five-year, um, maintenance program for you if you want. But it takes staff time to do that and, and Myra and I just don't have enough time. That's a whole pavement engineer position. Um, same thing with the GPS. I mean, it not only will be helpful for, um, snow removal. Um, it will also provide a safety information of our drivers. It will also, you know, provide a lot, a lot of other information if we want to subscribe to it. We just, we wanna, we think these two tools will be helpful for the community and for the staff, um, and be more efficient, so. I'm supposed to move on or nobody else will get a turn, so.
We got plenty of time, Chuck, it's raining. You got nowhere to go.
This is the final slide, um, just wanted to show you, so the twenty-six requested. That shows with all, if everything was funded that Myra and Anthony just went over. Um, our capital projects amount would be three fifty-two versus the adopted twenty-five budget of one, one sixty-one. And again, that was, we'll have the one, the one sixty-one isn't at three fifty-two, so the difference about two hundred thousand is what. The equipment and the programs were asking for, um, essentially. The other commodities and contractual services are pretty much just flat from the other previous year, so. With that, we'll answer any other questions you may have or move on to the next department who I don't know who it is. Development. All right, you're up.
Evening, um, this will be the shortest one. We have, uh, if you're looking at the, the last three years, three, four and five. Um, personnel has went up, you will see a significant jump from twenty-four to twenty-five. Several reasons, kind of all came together. Part of it's the, the development plan for the employees. One, two, three, four, five certifications occurred. Um, each of them, um, have a little bump in pay as well. And then we had the, um, significant bump associated with pay raise, all of which came on top of the. Development review stuff for their certifications. They've, for all those certifications, then you got the, so that's what, that's what that significance is. It relates to commodities. Those numbers, um, you can see they've been fairly straightforward. They have a, a somewhat significant bump. Um, at least for our department, um, if you're comparing it to the street department, that fifty is nothing. But for us, for us.
That's half the asphalt they needed.
So, um, some of these, uh, are. Somewhat out of our control, but when they come due, they get paid for. Um, so some of that's coming out of that scenario. Um, contracted services. You can see it bumped and moved around. The actual in twenty twenty-four, we had the original overlay stuff in it. But it didn't get, um, when we went through it and we had to push money into, um, twenty-five. But twenty-four also included the IBTS contract that we moved around further. So the numbers have adjusted significantly for all four of those. And then capital projects, we don't have those, uh, other than those are usually associated, associated with. Um, equipment related to our, um, encode software, so permitting and we're getting stuff associated with that.
Jack, you might just note on the IBTS, we had previously budgeted and used them for inspections and we don't.
Right, right. Um, and we don't have, and that was, that savings was what paid for over half of the overlays project for this year. So, um, that moved around a bunch, um, for. The non-personnel stuff going forward, as, as you can see, um, the numbers. The kind of bounce, bounce around again. We went up on the commodities for the twenty-six, twenty twenty-six baseline, but went down in the contracted services. Again, that going down is the IBTS money that's gone and we will have already paid for the overlay stuff. So that money isn't gonna be needed. That, those contracted services at twenty-one will also include all the reviews that we have done by the. Outside engineers for developments, et cetera, and all of which is also reimbursed by the development, um, team, the developer. So we put it in there for that. So not a significant change from, from us as it relates to the twenty-five and the twenty-six. Um, goes down just a little bit here. Um, so when you take into all into, into account. Pretty straightforward. I don't know, as again, we don't have CIP, so. There's not a lot to ask for. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but.
Jack, thank your, thank your team for getting through all those certifications. I know it's not easy. And even Brandy, being able to fill in for Linda is nice, so, you know, and not having to pay contractors to redo inspections for commercials. It's great. We didn't, we didn't have commercial for a long time and then when we had it, we had to figure out a way to do it and now we got in-house.
Well, and we also had a, but a staffing issue that happened all around that same time. So we needed to have somebody experienced and then we lost somebody. You know, so we brought people in. It's that bouncing around from three, four and five, really.
But as, as, but I, I think that's what I was trying to say earlier is that, that IBTS, the savings there is a direct result of. Our investment in staff and our staff's commitment to those advancements and being able to do those inspections in-house. So that's a success story and probably our biggest success story in our, um, career development planning.
Thanks, Jack. Rick's got no capital projects.
Looking at budget history, um, we have progressively increased there, as you can see. Um, had a little dip in actual twenty-four personnel, uh, and of course, as I explained in the beginning. A lot of that's due to not having somebody in my position for a few months. And then in twenty-five, assuming a fully staffed with our increases in compensation as well as retirement. As you look at commodities there, commodities have kind of fluctuated a little bit with contracted services. Mostly due to the Tyler migration that mostly occurred during the twenty-four fiscal year. So that's where you'll see a little dip in the twenty-five adopted. We won't be spending so much on the migration portion. And then capital projects, we have a whopping, I mean, why I'm saying it, eleven hundred dollars in capital projects for twenty-four. That was actually a result of the Tyler migration. We purchased some scanners now that we're able to scan documents instead of having paper copies and stuff. So we have, we have utilized those scanners quite a bit. Adding the finance baseline for twenty-five and twenty-six, you can kind of see a little bump. This finance is a good department to kind of see where commodities and inflation is happening. Uh, there's not a bunch of change as far as what we're looking at. Um, a lot of it's reflected into that three percent increase, that five percent increase. So this is a, this is a good department to see how inflation is affecting our budgets going forward. Contracted services, we really have no change. We've gotten no notice on any of our contracted services, uh, increasing. So that has stayed the same. And again, capital projects are not included in the baseline. We will talk about one here on the next slide. Financial transparency platform, that is one budget request we've been entertaining. This actually followed me here from Salina, the one firm in particular. Although if we did agree to do this, we would obviously go out for an RFQ and follow the city's procedures and policies. Um, I'm looking for a vendor, but I had one specifically following me here. Um, we were looking pretty heavily at doing it in Salina. There are a handful of cities surrounding us. One of which is Grandview that has this type of software. Basically, what this would do is we take our financial system or financial monthly results. We upload them on a secure platform. They manipulate it. This company can do, or most of these companies that would fall under this, um, idea of a vendor. Can do almost anything you want with this. You can tell them how you want the information to look. Uh, if we have public that is looking for certain information, we can tell them to focus on that pretty heavily. And then they are always there. The one in particular that I've been talking to are very heavily customer-focused. They like to be able to control manipulating the data. So we can have like a twenty-four hour turnaround. Once we send it to them, they'll turn it back, stuff we could upload to the website. Given our presentations, um, the one that I'm talking to again is heavily involved in doing the budget book. They have a complete template that follows GIA or the agency that. The government financial agency that controls the budget book award, they follow that template. So that is another benefit of having this software. Um, we're definitely up to talking about it now that we have a financial analyst and have a little more time. Um, we're open to continuing this conversation next year, but we wanted to get it in front of you. Every year, obviously, these, um, project, or these vendors increase prices and we could lock in a price for the next three years.
Rick, is this the twenty-five K, is it, uh, per year?
That is not, that is including the one time. They have a one time of approximately seventy-five hundred. And then roughly around eighteen thousand is a manual.
Okay, okay. And, uh, is it a standalone system or does it work with our, our, uh, uh, current software too on the, on the company website?
System because you're taking the financials from Tyler Financial and passing it on to them on their secure platform. And then they're manipulating the data to give you exactly what you want to see.
Okay, thank you.
Another question. I don't know that this will do it, but what about financial statements?
I, I am confident that they can do it. We, we had that quick discussion. Um, it's just a matter of us outlining how we want them to look. And of course, I'd want to follow what our external auditors are doing as well. So I don't want them making something that we have to continually manipulate for the auditors. Now, now we're just adding the requested item here. As you can see, um, our contracted services have jumped up for twenty-six. That is, um, mostly that transparency software. Also in the commodities for twenty-six, just, uh, just another couple of notes on that. The, those commodities also include credit card processing that fluctuates every year. And any kind of bank charges which would come from credit card processing. Um, so that is a reflection of what we are seeing the credit card cost be at this point. And that is thrown in on the commodity line. Finance, do you guys have any other additional questions?
Mr. Rick, on the, on the, on the credit card processing, you mean, uh, we, we charge for that, right?
We charge of that to recoup some of that cost, but it goes into that budget line item. And then it's offset.
Got it. Thank you.
As much as possible.
Hey, baby, Matt with Parks and Recreation. Uh, the Parks and Recreation budget is funded out of the general fund. Uh, we do have a parks and storm roll sales tax, uh, that is for projects, um, specifically. Um, as you can see, uh, they quite jump in personnel. So most of two thousand twenty-four, we were without one park, full-time park maintenance worker due to military leave. Um, they left in March of twenty-four and then we were able to fill that position at the end of July of twenty-four. And as of right now, we are fully staffed. Um, in our commodities, that's where we have kind of our, um. A lot, lot of that is a lot of our recreational side, so it's good. So our recreation numbers are increasing significantly year, year over year. That comes with more expenses, uh, uniform. Um, umpire specifically, but most of that is recouped through registration fees. So we're just about breaking even in most of our use ports. Our contractor services, the big one to highlight is our core lease payments, um, that is jumping up year over year. Uh, there are internal discussions with administration and, uh, city attorney to look at what further options we may have to, to move forward there. And then the capital projects, you'll see the, the increase in twenty twenty-five. That was for the campground road servicing project. There was a hundred and fifty thousand in that project. Um, it was greatly appreciated, um, from the board to the campers. Um, we've been hearing all just but great comments online and at the campground. Um, big improvement, we were able to add some more gravel in there. Um, obviously redo the roads, get those fixed. Um, and we were significantly under budget. We were just under about a hundred and fourteen thousand of that hundred and fifty. So, um, that project is basically complete, so. So I kind of see the increase across there, um, with the capital improvements. And then obviously some of the contracted services with the increase in recreation as well as, um, the core lease payments. So our budget requests, um, we have, so we've been working with, um, the public works department, specifically Myra, on the. Uh, core replacement, uh, plan. So about two, two and a half, three years ago, Cynthia had us come together as two departments and look at. Um, all the equipment we have between us and the street department and figure out what needs to be replaced. what needs to be replaced now, what could wait, but to make sure that we're not replacing equipment at where it's completely untradeable in a sense. So for example, we have a hand-me-down backhoe from the street department that is from the early two thousands. To replace that, to buy a brand new one, we somewhere up in, you know, two hundred thousand dollars or so. So if, if we were on a good plan where we could replace some mowers, wouldn't they have the right amount of miles on them? Their trade-in value is a lot higher. So we're not paying the full, you know, twenty thousand dollars. We're paying, you know, half of that if possible. So with that, we've been working the street department. They were able to get their tractor with the arm mower on it this past year on the lease payment. And in there, we've got a couple of mowers and then we also got a side-by-side recently. The next on the list for the parks department is replacing a golf cart. It's from nineteen ninety-nine. It was a little camp post golf cart, but it is, we are putting a little bit more money into it now. We do use it frequently and would be a good replacement. So we could continue using it around the parks. It's also used for our support supervisors for soccer and baseball softball. As well as for seasonals, if they're under eighteen, they're able to drive that since they can't drive city vehicles. The tool cat buckets, this is one of our most used items underneath mowers. But the arm on the tool cat is bent. And so to get that fixed, we could need to take that back into into, oh, try to think, Bobcat? Yeah, Bobcat. Couldn't think of it. To get that in replace that, they gave us a quote for about six thousand last year. So hopefully that would still be usable there. Senior center updates, as we're getting more equipment or more people inside the senior centers getting more use, we're getting more rentals. Aspen, Ryan, she's our recreation coordinator. She handles all of our facility rentals. It's kind of her goal to kind of update that, spruce it up to make it more appealing. One for the seniors and two for rentals. So the, has original floors in there from two thousand thirteen. They've been scrubbed, they've been waxed, they've been all they can get. So we're looking to replace that. Cabinets, countertops and lighting could all use a facelift. And we believe that money would be recruited through, through rentals and on that side of things. The Billy goat leaf fact, this is the hub cleanup leaves, trash debris with more efficiency right now. We blow it into a big pile. Mow it, try to mulch it up a little bit, but this will be able to get that off the courtyard quickly. Along business fronts around the courtyard, the courtyard trees are, they are pretty, but when fall comes, they, they make quite the mess for people downtown. We do have trees all throughout the park campground around our shelters. So this would be just a little bit more efficiency for our park staff. And then park maintenance updates, the street department got a nice little facelift in their shop and now they've seen it. So one has, someone else has. We're not looking for a full kitchen there. We're looking to upgrade some windows. So the windows at the park shop have cracks all around them. And so they're looking to get some new windows there. We have AC units in those windows that we'd be looking to make sure those are sealed properly and heated. And then the cabinets, repainting those, they're kind of an old barn red. They're kind of chipping. So it's just doing that and then replacing the floors into more of an epoxy. They're on a concrete floor right now. Shows a lot of dirt, dust and things like that. So they're just trying to clean up their area that they're in the most.
You can do Jack's floor while you're at it.
I mean, definitely could. I mean, they no, definitely could. So the guys, they epoxied all the park restroom floors themselves in the house. So they have all the equipment and it takes their, they got it down to a science now. So it's something they could possibly do.
Matt, did I hear you say that you replaced the, that bent arm once already for six thousand dollars?
No, we got a quote for it.
Okay. Then you hope, you're hoping it was still good. Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
So as we added those budget requests in for twenty-twenty-six, as you can see, it's, it's pretty in line for what we had in fiscal twenty-four, down a little and or in twenty-three, down low in twenty-four, then skyrocketed for the road replacements for the campground. But back kind of down to where we normally are in our requests and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
All right, I'm going to jump in here and look at the elected officials budget. Looking at the budget, it is a pretty straightforward budget. There's only one that I want to highlight here in the twenty-five adopted. We have fifteen thousand in there for Direction Finder that will be conducted this summer, early fall. That is at fifteen thousand. That is on a three-year cycle. So you'll see that every three years here, hence the three years that you're seeing now.
Just to clarify, the Direction Finder is our citizen survey. Survey.
And on top of that, just another little bump in the commodities. Granted, you guys don't have a lot of electricity and that type of stuff that
We turn off half the lights.
Yeah, you don't need lights.
Should we make sure the meetings, I guess?
Training, training and travel as we, as we are looking at getting training and travel. That has increased just a little bit. Looking at the baseline, we do not have a ton of information here other than the twenty-five adopted, as you can see in contracted services with that fifteen thousand that we just talked about. And it's jumping kind of back down there. Also included in the twenty-six baseline under the commodities, we do, we did earmark three hundred dollars for elected official t-shirts. So that is included in that baseline as of right now.
Just to clarify, Rick, it wouldn't be t-shirts. It would be city polos or shirts to be able to wear to conferences and stuff that would have the city logo on them. We had had a request for that.
Yeah, I think the elected officials can pay for their insurance. Matt's got a catalog. There's a place that's got all of our logo, right? We can just go to them and get it printed if we want one. I'll be okay.
All right, you guys do have one budget request that we threw in there and that is this strategic planning process. This was talked about in depth at the retreat. We are looking to get that updated from two thousand nineteen.
Is that what we spent last time or we spent a little more?
I, I actually think we spent slightly less last time.
And then we rolled that into the comp plan right?
And we'd rolled it. And then we were able to do the comp plan. We had several different contracts with them. But in looking now and I reached out to the MCMA, Missouri City Managers List serve fifty is about what people are estimating for a strategic plan right now.
Yeah.
And we would do an RFQ for that.
And I've talked to Cynthia on this too. I'd like to know where the board stands, but I'd like the, you know, whatever facilitator we get to spend a lot of time on public safety, since we just have public safety sales tax pass. I know roads will come up regardless and Jack's still got quite a bit to do on the comp plan roadmap. So I don't think we need to spend a ton of time on that, but I think public safety and possibly streets. Matt still has a parks master plan too, but how we implement the transportation master plan now that we have that to look at and water sever, all that stuff. But public safety heavy. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I agree.
Both of that will end up being an increase in your capital projects of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think we need it this year. I mean, I tried to get a budget last year. We, it's been too long. We need to get out there and do it again.
That is it for elected officials. I was trying to go over to Jason.
I remember when the Parks Director Ninety-nine bought that golf cart.
Isn't there a picture of you and Tony in a golf cart? There's a different one.
Golf cart, but that's a different golf.
Okay. Oh, that was before we owned a golf cart.
We didn't own that. That was on loan. I'm sure he would have no idea and still be chugging along. Here's a look at our police budget up till now and up through this fiscal year. Police budget's been funded solely through the general fund. As you know, the public safety sales tax pass will go into effect starting October one and start trickling after that. So that will change for the next fiscal year. You see some fluctuation in personnel. That's due to attrition turnover, staffing levels ebbing and flowing. And then contract negotiations and the effects that have on salaries. Commodities as well have, have been impacted. Vehicle maintenance and repairs fluctuate. In twenty-five, we adopted with the allo contract, that was a change and that hit, hit that line as well. Fuel projections, insurance increases, training and travel with career development. We made an adjustment for the police department's contribution to the VERF fund to bring that more in a line where it needs to be. And then animal services increases there pertaining to vet veterinarian services. We've seen a noticeable increase there over the years. And then in twenty-three and twenty-four, we had some capital projects where we replaced the in-car computers. And then those drop off there for twenty-five. Here you can look at the baseline and see how everything kind of lays out there. You'll see in twenty-five that jump in commodities. That's where there was that adjustment to that VERF fund. Where we weren't, weren't on track with that and Rick's brought us into a line, alignment there by about fifty thousand dollars. And in capital projects, there's, there's an increase there. Including some stuff like the AEDs in this building and some equipment for cars and gun replacements. So.
Hey Chief, what's that, what's the drop in the, in the capital project twenty-twenty-five adopted in the twenty-twenty-five baseline? What's that drop? Twenty-two thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the
Okay, okay.
The adopted includes, includes the stuff that we, we want to do, would like to do, but the baseline is like bare bones. If the bottom fell out of the market, that's what
Well, and so what we did in the twenty-twenty-five baseline, we pulled out those one-time items.
Okay.
That then we would look at and that, and then you look in twenty-six, we're looking to put the, put something back in. It may not be the same thing, but in looking at those.
Got it. Thank you.
For the general fund, we're, we've only got one budget request. And that is to make some upgrades to the outdoor warning siren system. That system was installed in two thousand eight with some assistance through FEMA and SEMA. And over the years, it's gone through regular maintenance and repairs as needed due to lightning strikes and stuff like that. But there's never been really an upgrade and any improvement to the, to the system. What we want to add is what's called a rapid warning system. This system connects with the National Weather Service. And if slash when there is a tornado warning issued for Smithville, it will automatically sound the sirens. Right now, when that happens, I have to have somebody physically in this building and press that blue button on the control panel. The other thing it will allow us to do is it will allow us with the installation of a good old fashioned traditional landline for administrative staff or any other staff would, would be necessary to be able to trip that siren remotely if need be. If the National Weather Service hasn't issued a warning, but we've got an officer that has visually seen rotation. There's a dedicated number they can call that will then trip the siren that way as well. And we're, we're not able to do that now either. So, you know, that's going to improve reliability. It's going to greatly improve response times and accessibility to it as well. And this seems, this will integrate with our current wheeling system right now. This often, if you recall, last year at the retreat, we kind of had a somewhat in-depth discussion about the outdoor warning siren system as a whole. And we toyed with the idea of what would it cost to replace the whole thing. We're pretty confident this is going to push that down the road a little bit, get us some more years out of this system while we can. And before we go to a complete full replacement, it doesn't quite bring it up to all the bells and whistles of what a full-blown replacement system would be, but it comes at a considerable less cost as well. So it's kind of give the most bang for the buck while we can until that time does come where we have to replace the entire system.
Do you have any projections on when that time will come and we need to replace the entire system?
Based on industry standards, projections, guesses. You're probably in the twenty, twenty-five year range.
Okay. With, with, with this system.
That also depends on use of the system, abuse of the system. The weather, where you're at, where you're located, where you're, where you're in the country up north. They take a whole lot more abuse than they do, or they take different abuse down south. So system is different and is evaluated differently. But if you, if you're looking for just, if you go out and Google it and looking and depending on talking to whether it's our vendor or another vendor, the ones I've talked to shoot it somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five range roughly. But not necessarily a, a drop dead date. A lot of times vendors do a great job of continuing to bring out ways to enhance a system and improve a system and, and get more life out of a system. Like I said, it gets back to, you may not have all the bells and whistles, you know, a, a new, new system, I'm going to be able to trip from my phone. I'm going to be able to monitor from my phone. I would be able to get automatic email updates on a daily, every day on how the system's working and, and what it's doing. But you balance that with a cost. So, you know, most likely I would realistically say, you know, it was put in in two thousand eight, this system would go to probably twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five fairly easily. With an investment in continuing to improve things, you may have to replace the radios in them to upgrade them all, stuff like that, communications. We may have to add repeaters. We're definitely going to have to add locations as we grow. You may push it out farther than that. It just, and then there will, there will come a point where we have to make that decision is do we want to continue with the same system with what it does for us versus what a new system will get for us on, on the cost?
And also just a reminder, it's an outdoor warning system.
It is an
Days like today, most people aren't outside. They're inside when it's raining, pouring.
I don't think I know a single person that have one of these.
Yeah.
My grandkids don't have one of these. Yes. Well, one of them is.
Not during that pouring rain, yeah.
So any questions about the rapid warning system? We've looked at this actually since twenty-twenty-three and worked.
I can tell you, when we did have a tornado, I heard it, well, I'm clear, because I was outside.
And every Wednesday, the first Wednesday of every month, when we sign them, I get a text from my wife knowing the one by our neighborhood goes off. She doesn't even have, I don't even have to ask her anymore. I get that test going. Yep. We back up just a moment. Well, touch on something. Because Cynthia asked me about this and this is a great time to give you just this little bit of information. Wow, okay. There was prop, there was land annexed down off of Mount Olivet recently. We, we pulled out our maps that show the coverage areas because we were concerned with where's that fall and everything in relation to siren? That area actually is already covered from a siren down there on Tillman. It's got to do with the proximity of it. And actually the fact that the one on Tillman sets up elevated compared to that property. So that helps it in distance and reach. We do have one local, one fairly well populated area in town that isn't covered under industry standard maps where you pick your, your location, your siren and you're supposed to be within X number of feet. And that's the Whiskey Ridge area over off of KK and Thomas. All that's developed well after all this was put in. Now I have no doubt that they can be heard. It's, it's a matter of whether they are, how many feet within It's a, it's a matter of whether they are, how many feet within a siren and what they sound like. Um, and in fact, uh, Captain Rob and I have talked and, uh, the plan is, uh, tomorrow to have somebody up there just out of sheer curiosity. We want to know what it sounds like, uh, at Whiskey Ridge when they go off. So we'll be checking on that tomorrow if the weather permits us to. So. So, um, this is what, uh, our budget would look like with that, uh, fifty thousand plugged in for, um, the rapid warning system. Um, you see, just bumps up the capital line there. Not, not a lot of changes there. And then this is where we veer from everybody else.
This is what, uh, our budget would look like with that, uh, fifty thousand plugged in.
Chief, before you move on, real quickly, wanted to just make sure and wrap up the general fund discussion. Any questions that the board has of any of the information we've presented? Anything that jumps out at you of not, absolutely not at all supportive of, of that particular budget item? Or on the other hand, we've talked about or I've thought about, and I'd like to see this included, something else that we haven't included.
Nothing necessarily there, but when we were talking about the vehicle replacement, I know you've been keeping them longer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe just some information on how that's really working. Are we really satisfied with it or how do we move forward?
We have ongoing meetings with Enterprise on that and Rick and I have talked and on our list of items is to have a good summary of the verf. And you know what? It dawns on me that we don't have that included in the budget discussion. And so we need to, we need to put some information together for you all. And I will just note, I, I don't know, Rick, that we've talked about this and I finally kind of put things together. The total of items included is those departmental budget requests total just under four hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, I've not looked comparatively to what that looks like on an annual basis because as we talked, like, um, Alderman Russell saw. Sometimes when we look at the baseline, a lot of those items that are one time we pull out and they're not included in that, in that twenty-six baseline. And so this is what we're looking at here. We'll try to put together a better analysis of that moving forward as well. But that gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Not all of those things may make it in because as we start looking at those other expenditures as we move through the budget process. But we want you all to know those sort of things that are prioritized by departments to keep just work moving on a day-to-day basis. So we appreciate your time on that. And then now we can shift gears to our new revenue source to fund priorities of the police department.
Just as a reminder, um, communications regarding Proposition P, um, highlighted the following priorities. Um, and, and these were ones we hit on at literally every meeting we were at over and over. I think Gina and I can recite these in our, in our sleep. Um, that's increased compensation benefits, uh, for recruiting and retention, uh, additional staffing and equipment as that's needed and, uh, the equipment needed for that staffing and the implementation of full-time animal control program with personnel. Um, at the board retreat, uh, direction was given with priorities, uh, of recruiting retention and the development of the animal control program, if you recall that. And the anticipated revenue collections, um, that will start October one. Um, still estimated at that seven hundred thousand dollar mark, uh, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And while it will start collections in October, that money won't start trickling in. Um, it will start trickling in, um, but not like opening a fire hydrant. It's going to be more like slowly turning on a garden hose. So, um, we don't anticipate kind of hitting full stride till probably second quarter, um, fiscal year, February, March-ish. Um, and, and we'll, we've got, uh, a graphic for you here on that where we kind. Uh, this shows you, uh, anticipated revenues for the public safety sales tax based on performance of the other two half-cent sales taxes. And you'll see, um, we start coming in at a slow pace and then gradually pick up there and does kind of ebb and flow through the year.
Chief, I'm going to clarify real quickly also, when, when he mentioned this, it is information of the other two public safety sales taxes. This reflects the revenues that came in in the first year of implementation of the Parks and, uh, Stormwater Sales Tax and the Capital Improvement Sales Tax.
Yep. The pace and amounts and all that, so.
And typically that September, October bump is our summer quarter hitting all at once, so. Yep.
And what you're seeing there, when you look at a month there, they're generally forty-five to sixty days behind collections. Send them a new mouse or something. Okay. Uh, this slide, uh, outlines, um, fund balance projections for the public safety sales tax in that blue line. And then there's a couple of items there, uh, benchmarked at, uh, times. And that is the, um, the step adjustments that are currently contractually obligated, which will happen in January. And then when the negotiations open up for contractual, contractual negotiations open up, um, as outlined in the current contract in March. So that puts everything kind of in perspective now. Um, projections for fund balance do not include anything related to those contractual negotiations. Um, because we don't know where they're going to land. We don't know what that is and that's not appropriate.
We would look at a budget amendment as, as we outline on here. Once we've negotiated that, we would look at a budget amendment.
Yep, and then that, that, uh, fund balance projection.
Before you move forward on that, Chief, also you talked about step increases and what I want to make sure that everybody understands that the step increases are the salary, the, they're the raises. Those will be effective based on the, um, negotiated contracts, January one for both bargaining units. Um, and the average department-wide is about a three-point-five percent increase. Sergeants, it is three-point-five because I think both of them are eligible for three-point-five based on their step. And then it's either three and a half or three and a, three quarters, I think, is the average for frontline officers.
Three and a half. Four to three and a half basically, where they fall.
Yeah.
These are some of the expenses, um, we're anticipating coming out of that public safety sales tax. Um, implementation of those contractual increases in January, those step increases. And, um, any kind of contract negotiations moving forward there in the spring, the March, the March date we talked about there. We have moved, uh, the TASER replacement program from the general fund out into the public safety sales tax fund. That is public safety equipment absolutely necessary. Um, we do know that, uh, next year, we're going to, we are going to be forced to replace our body cameras. Uh, we received notice in, uh, October that, uh, our current body cameras are, uh, end of life with the manufacturer and, um, they no longer offer any kind of service or warranty on them. Typically, we keep a warranty, an extended warranty on them for repairs. Um, so as of, uh, the beginning of this fiscal year, um, we're just paying out of pocket for repairs on those, um, based on, um, labor and parts, uh, and there is a minimum repair on those body cameras when they're sent in of five hundred dollars per camera, so. Next, we want to look at, much like what we do with tasers, we want to look at starting implementing a radio replacement program where a few are replaced every year as opposed to what we were forced to do, uh, back in twenty-one, which was replace the majority of them. Um, at that time, we had to replace fifteen out of twenty-five, uh, due to some changes made to the, uh, the Mars radio system. And we want to do something very similar with, uh, our AEDs, our Automatic External Defibrillators that are in the police cars. Um, historically, um, we've just replaced those at end of life and it seems like inevitably they come around in a big old chunk and we're replacing all of them or almost all of them at once. We want to start looking at trying to replace a handful of those each year, keeping them in our rotation. So we're always just spreading that cost out over several years and not seeing those ups and downs and those spikes, um, from year to year. Uh, and then there's, uh, officer training, uh, in there as well. Um, and that's related, related to, um, will be related to newer officers. Um, it will be related to the continued education required by the Missouri Post. And then some of that is also tied back with, um, career development as well. And then we've got, uh, animal, the animal control program. That's going to be your cost for your full-time animal control officer, uh, the equipment, technology necessary, um, the vi- vehicle that, uh, would need to be outfitted and all the equipment for that vehicle and all the necessary equipment for the field and safety gear. Uh, and then training and veterinarian services as well. We're fortunate that we do have some training that's already been identified coming up next year here in the Kansas City area. Both at the Kansas City Police Academy and over at DePlatte County, uh, Resource Center. So we're going to have training right here in our own backyard. And then this looks at kind of summarizing all those anticipated expenses. Um, keep in mind, this is a partial year. This isn't a full year here. The animal control program, we don't anticipate, uh, the full-time position starting till about April, about mid-year. And, um, there will be ongoing expenses, um, out of that animal control number, that hundred and thirteen thousand of, um, about fifteen to seventeen thousand of that is one-time upfront expense. So that gives you an idea roughly around mid to upper nineties on what we anticipate, uh, the ongoing annual expense after that.
Chief, I want to outline also, um, on the, we talk about the police expenditures. Uh, we show ninety-one thousand dollars there. That's the cost of the implementation of the steps from January one that we talked about earlier. That number is already outlined and is contractual, so that doesn't require the budget amendment. That's the increase contractually.
And, uh, at the retreat, we talked about a couple of things. We talked about fund balance and we talked about citizens review committee. Uh, at the retreat, the board, uh, discussed a fund balance of ten percent. Uh, after further discussion, once we've gotten back here with staff, uh, due to the fact that this is the only public safety sales tax that funds people, uh, staff is, is going to lean more towards recommending, uh, a minimum of twenty percent.
Our, our only sales tax that funds people.
Yeah.
The only public safety sales tax that funds people. This is the only sales tax that funds people. Yeah, yeah. This is the only tax that substantially, any of the special sales taxes that funds and that substantially funds people.
And it, and it has a sunset, so it's, I think twenty, I think twenty percent is fair.
As well. Oh, but like before with Anthony, I thought we were here. And then on the citizens review committee, um, we would anticipate that being, uh, a three-person committee, um, with citizens on that committee. Um, hopefully, uh, we would recommend folks with either a law enforcement and/or financial background to, to be appointed to that committee. And we anticipate they would probably meet somewhere between either quarterly or every six months. So three, four, six months intervals in there, uh, to be determined, but to, uh, to review both, uh, expenses, um, projected revenues and anticipated budget items to make sure, uh, everything's staying on track. Everything is public safety related and to, uh, contribute to transparency and, um, accountability there.
Sounds good.
I think that's yours. Any questions?
If we could, then also I think I got nods around the table at twenty percent for a fund balance and then we will put something together on, uh, a committee for, for the board's review into the future as well, so.
All right, I'm just here to wrap up with the exact same slide we kind of started out with. Kind of just giving another overview of what the budget, uh, calendar will look like. Uh, we did, and I did make note that we will add a verf conversation in here as well, um, in the next couple of months. Um, any other questions that you've been thinking of? Any other departments issues that you thought of subsequent? Or any other budget items you guys are thinking we should be looking at as well? All right.
I have, no, looking at Anthony, when we walked around our subdivision, we discovered a lot of the storm sewers weren't put in properly. So that just led to the discussion of, of a review probably of all the subdivisions. And where does that fit into future budgets? Not that it is needed right now, but just put that on the radar out there.
And it is on the radar and we'll have some of that discussion through the capital improvement process because that's where that funding would come from.
Okay.
Mostly, right?
Stormwater.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
It's like, uh, it's like our heritage, Heritage Park Creek that's flowing backwards, you know? Sometimes we got to fix the grade. Or the culvert that didn't exist, you know, in some places, fully collapsed or whatever. I can hear him just fine, Gina.
But like, uh, as far as the storm drains that are concerned, like as we're going through the Harborview, we're checking the storm drains and if they need to be repaired at the time, because the way they were set up is they have tops on them. Well, they used two-by-fours that are eventually rotting away. So we're taking the tops off. We're putting actual blocks and, uh, liquid nail around them so they're watertight and different things like that. Because if not, you see a lot of the dirt from around these storm drains falling in and everybody's like, where's the dirt? When I filled this up two weeks ago, you know? So we're, we're trying to stay on top of that, but you know, it's just, it's six of us and it takes a tad bit of time. So over time, we will get it done.
Sounds great. Little by little.
Yeah.
All right, well, we thank you and we know this is a lot of information that we went over tonight, um, both in the second quarter budget as well as our first discussion that looking at twenty-six. Um, we have a lot more to look at going forward and, uh, appreciate your time tonight.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion, motion to adjourn?
Thank you to have a second.
Second.
All those favoring adjournings say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Hey, uh, Alderman Hartman, we're going to take a five-minute break or so. We've been going at this for two hours now, so I think some people need to take a quick break. So we'll be, we'll, we'll start at, let's say, seven seventeen, Linda, seven fifteen, seven fifteen.